No, I didn't say.
Thank you.
So the parking lot today?
Yeah.
By giving traffic updates. Great, thank you. Okay, good morning, everyone. This is Mark Palillo. All right. Good morning, everyone. This is Mark Palillo, Chair of the Select Board. With the call to select board meeting to order on Wednesday, May 24th, 2023 at 8:00 AM. I'm joined by Vice Chair. Roy.
More.
Member Elizabeth Dion. One Elizabeth.
Good morning.
And I'm the Chair Patrice Tarvin.
Morning.
On a casual Wednesday morning meeting.
Yes.
It's a casual Friday.
Yeah.
My colleagues were in a nice tie. Is Jennifer online?
She'll be here a little later.
Okay, great. We should close this door. I don't know what computer do I use?
I don't know.
Okay, the only thing we have this morning is to discuss and possibly vote on positions for warrant articles. Segment B, which begins on Wednesday evening, May 31st. And she sent out some information for us.
Yeah.
Perhaps we're going to go through. At this point, I'm not aware. Or if you are, of any amendments. I'm hearing some rumor.
Well, yeah. So.
So I haven't seen any amendments as well. Correct?
Yeah, what I wanted to talk to you about is some of the language in some of the motions that's going to.
Some of the language.
We're going to need some direction on, yes.
Oh, okay. All right. You want to start there?
We can start there. So it is actually Article 16. It's the renaming and the repurposing of the capital slash debt stabilization fund.
Nice memo on that, okay?
Yeah, so Jennifer and I were speaking in regards to this in creating a capital stabilization fund. There is a capital stabilization fund already in place, but it's very specific to projects which have been completed.
There's one in place that currently exists.
So what we would propose to do is to rename it and repurpose it rather than repeal it and replace it.
That's described in the financial policies document as a kind of an archaic fund. But the proposal was made there to repurpose it.
Right, so the repurposing is what we need your direction on this morning. The way we have proposed to repurpose it is obviously to put transfer money in that maybe from free cash. But we would also like to be able to automatically have money go into this fund for, from sale of personal property, any type of reimbursement on any energy efficiency project. So specifically, when we have just engaged the law firm to help us capture some of the tax incentive federal government and that money, if we're successful in receiving that, instead of it having coming into the general fund, we would have it just go directly into this fund. Right now, all the money that comes in for reimbursement of that type or any type of sale of surplus property comes to the general fund, flows to free cash, and then it gets appropriated later on. What we're proposing is instead of that money flowing to free cash, it automatically goes into this capital stabilization fund, which can be used for capital appropriation later on. Where we are concerned about is the building projects that are currently in place. We have a library building project and a rink building project. Both committees have indicated that they would like to sell surplus property and then use some of that money towards their project in the future. As it is right now, without any change, if they were to do that, that money comes into the general fund, flows to free cash, and then we would have to appropriate that later on at a future town meeting. The concern is if it goes into a cap stabilization fund, it will have to be appropriated at a later date, but it's a two-third majority to take it out. And giving the building committees a hurdle like that, I wanted to be sensitive to that. So I talked to George about some potential language to exclude the library and the municipal rink from that language.
Because you're going to get resistance from them with that.
That, and it's a high, two-thirds of town meeting is a very high bar. So that's, if the board's comfortable with that, we could.
Here, we're talking about from potential sales of that nature.
So sale of personal, so I can tell you from the ring committee, what I'm hearing is, just as just an example, they're looking to bid out the freon that's at the rink. And I've heard a number of $80,000. I don't know.
Sell that freon that's old and.
Apparently, there's, there's companies that are.
Can't legally use that freon today, right?
This is just what I'm hearing from the ring committee.
Okay.
Discussion. So it's things like that. It's any of the metal or anything that might be salvageable with the, with the structure of the rink. I don't know what that number is, but I do know they want to be able to capture it.
And they would use that to reduce the indebtedness?
I don't know what the use is. I don't know what they're proposing.
Clarifying question, I'm sorry, Darian.
No, go ahead.
How does the building committees, no, I'm sorry to digress, I apologize. What authority do they have to, we, we control the rink building.
What my.
Private trustees control the, presumably. The building committee members can decide that any sort of scrap or whatever, they can just decide themselves to sell it and use it?
No.
Okay.
It's a, it's a select board vote. I've already informed them that they have to, they have to make a vote, they have to make a list of what they think is valuable. Anything valuable under Mass General Law, if it has value, has to be declared a surplus and then it has to be auctioned or bid out.
And it comes to, we've done this before, right? Because David.
Yeah.
Stuff from his community fund, we sold like.
We did, we put it on municipal bid and we had a.
It would be our decision to do that. And, but the money flows to free cash.
Yeah, it flows to the general fund. Now, if, if town meeting decides that the building committees can use it, that's a town meeting decision. It's not automatically a building.
We would, if I could just follow.
Yep, that's okay. I know, sorry.
They would sell this whatever, freon, which is great. We, we, comes before the select board, we authorize it, it's sold. And then automatically, the proceeds from that goes, it's a free cash.
It will flow to free cash.
Which still would have to be appropriated. So we'd have, we still have to go to town meeting, which is unlikely to occur anytime, you know, maybe in the fall or in next year, to appropriate those funds for specific building committee use.
Yes.
Instead, what you're suggesting is this money goes into cap.
No, I'm saying everything else but the building committee money would be put into the cap state fund. Because I don't, I wanted to be fair to the building committees.
But what difference does it make?
Because it's a two-third majority vote.
But I would.
It's the vote. It's, it, that's all it is, it's the vote.
Trish, I would add a condition to this, which is, I mean, this, this is kind of a one-time event to deal with these two particular building committees. But technically, these assets are town assets and had, had these assets been sold in the normal course, they would have been available for general, more general purposes.
Sure.
I, I think if the building committees one basically have a claim on that value, it, it shouldn't be available for the general use. I think it should go to their contingency. And then if, if it's, if the contingency is not used, then it gets released like any other contingencies I'm trusting. But I don't think it should be there. Because if it, if it were going to be made available to the project generally, then it should reduce indebtedness the same way that any private contribution.
And I think that decision is a town meeting decision. It's whatever the building committee proposes to town meeting and whether or not they agreed.
I think that's right. But I mean, what, so then we, still, still you can put it in the capital stabilization fund?
We could. The only thing again is it's a two-third vote to take it out. And I, and I haven't had an opportunity to have a conversation with the building committees about this. That's why I felt if we just give ourselves some breathing room to discuss it with them and leave it as is for right now.
But it still has to be appropriated, right?
Yes.
How have everyone looked at this? And they still have to sort of convince town meeting.
Yeah.
To appropriate either the free cash or the capital staff fund. I really like Roy's idea. Why wouldn't we just use, if we can use scrap metal, whatever, to reduce the tax burden, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't the select board? Then we can, well, we'd have to have an article, right, to allocate, appropriate out of the capital staff fund of free cash.
Yes, I know. We don't necessarily know the, the proceeds from the sale to reduce the indebtedness at this point.
No, this is all just.
Let me take Elizabeth.
So my question is going back a couple of steps and recognize that I'm new to this process.
Okay.
Are they, are the building committees taking the lead in selling the surplus assets? Or is the town taking, town staff, who's taking the lead?
And the reason I'm asking. They're taking the lead on identifying what a value they want to, to want to bid out or sell. That's keep it simple.
And just the reason I'm asking is who's got incentive to maximize value here? And somehow.
Good question.
Incentivize building committees to potentially realize additional cash on assets. And it's not that town staff aren't motivated, it's that town staff are overworked. So I'm just really thinking of aligning incentives. But I do agree that we ought to give ourselves some flexibility what we think about.
And, and I haven't had.
What would you include in here? How, what language would you include instead?
So the language that's here.
Motion's already been sort of, we already have the motion.
It's either leave, leave just sale of personal property and take out what's in the parentheticals or leave what's in the parentheticals.
So the way it's written now, if you carve out the library and the rink, then that allows us to decide at a later date what to do with any, any money they make from sale.
Yes.
It's not bound up with this mark article.
That's right. Any other personal property, like let's say we decided we wanted to sell this table. Whatever we get for this table will automatically go into the capital stabilization.
Right.
It, I would say this table has value, sure.
It's historic. I remember going to board meetings when I was a newbie, getting town meeting precincts traded. Say, look at that green felt. And it hasn't changed since, I don't think it's been cleaned since, actually.
No, we have actually cleaned it.
Oh, we have?
Yes.
Okay. Don't you think that having that parenthetical will create more of a debate at town meeting for it?
I do, but I, I'm concerned about, because I haven't had these.
Members are going to get up, trustees are going to get up and say, we really need this money?
Again, all this, all this really boils down to is whether or not the building committees are okay with a two-third majority vote.
But now I'm confused because you take the article as written here. It doesn't, it doesn't assign that money to the building committees. It just takes the money off the table.
And it doesn't now. It just leaves it as it is. Just will come, that money, instead of going into the capital stabilization fund that takes two-thirds to take it out, comes into the general fund, flows to free cash. And if you want to appropriate free cash, it's a majority vote. That, that's really the difference.
So it would be a separate. It doesn't require a town meeting action.
Both do.
To, what, does it require a town meeting action to make those monies available to the building committees in any form?
Does, say that again?
Well, so. Yes, you, you sell the freons, for example.
Yep, sell the freon.
And you get $80,000 for it. If that money were to be made available for the rink project in any way, shape or form, at that point, does that require another act of town meeting?
Yes, in either, in both instances, town meeting action is required.
I'm actually thinking not to include the parenthetical. Because what, what, what questions are going to come up, Patrice, is that what about other building projects? And so now we, we were repurposing this capital stabilization fund. And so now it's in place as a repurposed fund. And we've called out two current building projects, maybe future building projects, right? Is that going to confuse town meeting? What about future building projects?
Future building projects, the way this is written, will go into the capital stabilization fund.
I think all the money should go into the cap staff.
That, that's, that's why I'm.
I think all the money should go into the cap.
I think it's simpler.
I know Jeff's on for the warrant committee. I'd like his.
Mr. Lubian.
Yes. I know they're talking about it tonight.
I think you're right, Mark, though. Why, why should we carve out?
Why, why should we carve it out? And so, so the, if I can just finish my point, but welcome to have some input on this. Either way, you have to convince town meeting to use these funds for a dedicated building purpose, right? I like Roy's idea of reducing, you know, eighty grand, whatever, peanuts. So you have to go in front of town meeting and it takes two-thirds of all, takes two-thirds of all. If there's a good, if there's a good reason to re, to use these proceeds, and likely there would be for one of these building projects. I think you still get how many voted two-thirds.
I, I think the reason why I wanted this conversation is because of the conversations the building committees are having about using this money and being understanding that they know that it's a two-third vote.
Yeah, Jeff, Mr. Lubian?
Good morning, Jeff Lubian, Chair of the Warrant Committee, long time no see.
I know, I feel like, you know.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I'm in alignment. I think, I think, you know, my first thought was that this money, these monies would be used to pay it out to offset some of the debt. And I'm not sure if that's going to necessarily, the, those conversations have happened. I think to keep it cleaner, again, the warrant committee can weigh in as a full committee tonight. But to keep it cleaner, I would go with what your, dear Lays' recommendation is that everything goes into that and then it's up to town meeting to decide.
I, I think I agree. And in terms of thinking about incentives, we have wonderful people staffing these committees. I think everybody's incentivized to do the best by the town. I don't think there needs to be additional incentive. And I do think it just keeps it cleaner. It's going to be fair and minimize debate. And also, we honestly, on good projects, we have not had trouble clearing the two-thirds threshold. I think town meetings have been very supportive of these projects and will continue to be.
Trish, I have one more point to ask about the wording of the article. So the possible funds on the table here are refunds or reimbursements from energy efficient projects, solar installations, any other capital investments. I'm not, not sure what a fund received from a capital investment is. And.
Is that in the motion, Roy?
Yeah. Yes, in the motion. Well.
The revised.
I don't know if it's in the motion. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at Article 16.
Yeah, we have revised motions that we got. I may have my revised.
Yeah, it's whatever was sent out by Pam yesterday.
I'm looking at the packet, it says moved, and it says, actually, it says any funds received from refunds, rebates and reimbursements from energy efficiency projects.
Yep.
Solar installations.
Yep.
And other capital investments. Is that a refund on another, on some other capital investment? Or is it a fund received from other capital investments?
I think you can interpret it in a, in a couple of ways.
And I, because I don't know what a, I don't know what a fund received from a capital investment is.
The way I read it, and I'd have to double check this with Jennifer, is it could be potentially the turnback.
And it should be clear. And also, it, why doesn't it refer to a sale of land? It just says personal property.
Because there's Mass General Law around where sale of land money goes. It goes in a special revenue fund, like the one that the capital, the capital committee used last year, that million dollars, that was a sale of property.
Right.
There is financial, there's Mass General Law around, based on my conversation with George. When you sell property, it, it goes, it cannot be sent into a capital.
Do we have an account set up for, for that kind of sale?
Yes, there, there was one. And if we sold more land, another one would be set up. Yeah.
Okay.
We also sold that land up by the country.
George was uncomfortable with putting that language in there. He didn't feel.
Okay, well, if it's covered separately, that's fine. But then I just think this other capital investments language is unclear.
Okay.
Well, but we've got to have something. There's going to, there's going to be refunds, rebates, reimbursements from things besides energy efficiency.
But it's not clear if capital investments is referring to a refund or, or something else.
Can we just say any other source?
These have to go out, when do these have to go out?
After this meeting.
They got to go out, should they go? Right? We have a town meeting, main meeting tomorrow.
Well, I mean, the question is, when it says other capital investments, is that.
Why don't I do this, Roy?
Refund received from some other capital investment.
Well, I think it is, because you've got refunds, rebates and reimbursements. It applies to that list. That list is projects, installations, investment.
But I don't know what the future will hold.
Yeah, we're trying to.
It's going to be a grammarian here because it's, it's not parallel.
Music professor.
Yeah, just.
What, could I suggest that we leave the language as is just to go out? And if we need further.
Where instead of saying and other capital investments, if it said including other capital investments.
Okay, that's fine.
Be clear. Or, or and.
And/or, you could have an and slash or, and/or other capital investments.
We need to decide today or is it because they.
Yeah, well, this is a detail to put, but so we're agreed that the parenthetical about the two projects.
Coming out, yep, I'll, I'll strike that.
So what are you, changing the language, additional language on this? First, like Roy's can.
I think he had including other capital investments.
You okay with that?
And then just plainly in from the sale of personal property and deleting the rest.
Do we need to take a vote on this?
Nope, this, this clarifies the, the language and then you can take action whether or not it's favorable or unfavorable. That's the vote.
Do you want to see it in writing, folks, before we team, before we vote on this?
I, I think we can vote on it as we've asked, asked to be changed. That's, that's motion's binding.
But a motion directing favorable action on Article 16 as amended.
So moved.
Second, on favor.
Okay.
Good morning, young lady. How are you today?
All right. I don't think you're putting in enough hours in town hall.
Yeah, you're not, actually. We're going to, we're going to have to speak to you separately about that. Okay.
We can start at the beginning.
Obviously, we can go to CSH's there, folks.
Of course, she's working three jobs for us. Okay, why don't we, Article one is, you know, just reports. I forget, maybe we could just inform our colleague, what are the two? We have 7:45 AM tomorrow.
On, he can.
Oh, I'm looking forward to that meeting, 7:45. Mr. Widmer, do you mind? I know we're going to finalize discussions tomorrow. What are the reports now we're going to hear on Article one, Mike? As you know, at this point.
Sure, good morning. Article one on the first night, we hear from Will Brownsberger.
Okay, great.
And Claire Colburn, who's Chair of the Building Committee for the Library, a brief update. And then Jeff Lubian is going to give a preview of the budget. He requested, I think it's a good idea to do that in advance of the budget discussion, which will be on Monday, the following Monday, the fifth. So those three on night one. And the only one we have at this point for night two, June 5th, is Dave Rogers. As you know, we regularly, at the annual town meeting in June, hear from Will and Dave.
Okay, that's fine, Mike. I know we will discuss this tomorrow, but do you think that we need an update from the ring building committee? And just sort of, I know we have a very busy agenda and you're trying to get out, out of there in three nights. We don't have to.
I don't think they're ready to.
They're not ready to give up.
I don't.
They can do it as a select board meeting, perhaps.
I think they need a little bit more time to get some things in order.
All right, great, thank you. All right, thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate it. All right, Article four, Patrice for explanation.
So just, so this was actually proposed by Bob McGar, just to clean up some language and.
This is a Bob McGar article?
It, it is and it isn't. He proposed it, it didn't seem like a bad idea to clean up the zoning bylaw. It did have to go through the process because it's zoning. It was approved by the planning board at their last meeting. So it's really just to say inspector of buildings instead of building commissioner for building inspector within the bylaw.
In a serial detail.
Yes.
Okay.
I call it housekeeper.
I have a motion recommending favorable action.
So moved.
Second, on favor. Article seven, as I understand it from the moderator.
Yeah. Mike can confirm that, but that's my understanding.
Michael, just briefly, are we bringing this back in the fall?
I think that decision is up to you. When I talked to Ralph, I, I don't know that he made an absolutely final decision, but it seemed as if he wanted to defer this, presumably till the fall or later meeting when it.
Okay.
So I, I do think we have a number of zoning related issues that will. I think we're anticipating a lot of zoning in the fall. And I think this does make sense to consider if, if we're considering it. Just, I think it makes sense to consider all the zoning issues.
I, can I?
Put it forward.
Well, that, that's true too. I am concerned about bandwidth in terms of, because zoning's pretty complicated and it has to have some, there's a lot of processes that go involved in that. There's council review, there's obviously bylaw review committee. To, to, to put too many forward, I think might kind of hamper a very young planning board. So I would say that they.
Young interns, but service on the.
I'm not saying that everything has to happen in the fall, but I do think action ought to be deferred to the fall and we make some decisions collectively, collaboratively with what, what we do considering the fall. But I, I am concerned about piecemeal zoning decisions now.
Oh, absolutely. I think this one in particular, it, it has other pieces and tentacles to it that I think that we need to really look at. Procurement is one big one. I think one of George's concerns is because procurement law has really evolved over the years before, you know, after this was written, we really need to take a look at it more globally in terms of what it impacts for the town. So I think that it's my, my opinion, based on what I've seen in, in the way the bylaws currently written and what the desire is to change, it's going to take a little bit more time to kind of work through those issues.
I also, just FYI, I'm attending the first Metropolitan Area Planning Council in-person meeting in three years on the 31st. And I'm hoping then to find out what resources might be available for us in terms of professional support and planning.
Yeah, well, and then the other thing is having not, not a full-time planner is really.
Yeah.
It will impact some of this work as well.
I think Elizabeth's right. I mean, I think there is zoning, you know, we're trying to do more as it relates to business development in a community that there's a zoning bylaw that we can be prepared to introduce it to.
So I think the, the plan is there's going to be what Taylor Yates the other night and Republi's couple of hanging fruit, there's some changes we'd like to make in the fall that I think will be welcome and non-conversational. But we have a much larger set of zoning issues that we've got to work through. That will take time. That requires a town planner. So we're doing short-term stuff with an eye toward longer term.
I think that makes a lot of sense. As far as whether Ralph wants to bring this forward or not, I think part of this, Roy, to me, is how do we feel about this type of procedure that has had development impact study?
Well, that, that was the issue. Ralph and I actually talked about this separately. We think that this particular section of the zoning bylaws was adopted more than 20 years ago. And George Hall has told us several times that the zoning world has changed a lot since then. It's not clear that the way this section is written is what we would like to have going forward. And there's perhaps a reason why it's never been used up to now. Just the way towns actually do things in practice today is different from what.
And procurement is a big piece of that. Procurement is a very large piece of that.
The question becomes, do you want to just have in the planning boards toolkit to use it to discretion? And do you want to create a bylaw around it?
Well, I definitely think it needs to be looked at, reviewed and and kind of brought up to where what the town's seeking to do. I just, I think this is more of a just a piecemeal approach.
We're trying to get away from piecemeal approaches. I will say this so far, the citizens petitions, we've had a lot of them good. But residents and petitioners have been very reasonable about working with us as long as we stick to the faith that we're cooperative and collaborative about this. So I think it's an important issue. It's now risen to the top of our agenda to think about. My understanding and talking with Ralph is that he would like the same courtesy that others had had if they were withdrawing their articles, then let's just speak about it.
I think Mike.
And I think Mike is very gracious about that.
I think Mike can allow me that. Yes, sir. Okay, so that's gonna be withdrawn. We don't need to take a vote on that. Article twelve.
So this is a standing article. Town meeting has to take position on elected officials stipends or and or salary. So nothing much has changed here.
So nothing to change here. I'm just raising an issue that I want to be super, super clear. I'm not pushing. I'm just flagging it. I think increasingly, some of the things that are threatening of citizens. You know, I do think at some point we're gonna we're gonna struggle to find citizens like ourselves who can step forward to the select board. We may have to think about select or compensation. But you can really clear, I don't need it or want it, but that might be something we have to think about.
That'll be a two night debate.
That's why I am. I am not proposing this anytime soon anywhere.
And the school committee said that we weren't free.
Well, and it's, you know, we we have this at the school committee issue as well, and I I do not raise this now. I'm just flagging it.
Nice little profligate. Select board stipends were raised about thirty years ago.
Well, I think the other question is if if the assessors do become an appointed position, then that would you would have to address that.
Yeah, so so not wanting to make no specific. But I've heard from many people that is a barrier toward.
That's gonna be front news. That's gonna be in the front page of the front news in tomorrow's paper.
I can say right now, I am not asking. I am not asking for myself. I I think I need a grandfather myself out of any increase.
I think the practice has been every half century, your select board salary has been increased.
You couldn't. I wonder if really a reason people don't do this because if you look at the time commitment on an hourly basis, does it really make a difference whether you make twenty five cents an hour versus ten cents an hour?
You know, we are. We are all doing this labor of love and it is a labor of love, but I I think we need to think about it. If you decide to do nothing and not ask him to do anything now, for sure.
It's a time commitment. And so not to sort of digress further here, but you know, I don't know how many handful of years ago, there was a proposal to have a five member board. I think we were only one of three or four communities of the three hundred fifty one in Massachusetts have a three member board. Anyone that I talked to in town government is five member board. So let's not reopen that.
Let's say, yeah.
I don't want to reopen it, but the point is that I think that that people don't like because of the time commitment.
Well.
Yeah, but I'm not convinced that if I think we've had this discussion.
Please let's.
Yeah, I agree.
Just like in, yeah, so anyway, we're not gonna raise salaries today. So do I have a motion to recommend favorable action?
Second.
On favor. Okay, Article thirteen. Do these numbers include the adjustment for
the rate?
The rest of what we took on Monday evening for the rates effective August.
Effective July one, but billed August one.
Effective consumption in July one.
The spend the spending out of the fund is different from the revenue raised into the fund, so.
That's right. So this is the water so budget.
I guess appreciate that, but the question is, is would that have changed anything either way?
It might have slightly reduced the user the user fees that would be coming into the fund. But I don't, I think in the end, we probably are. It's gonna be a wash. So we'll we'll need to see how it goes.
Because one of the rationales was to increase rates is to boost reserves. So I don't see that we would increase expenditure by raising the rate.
Right, it was it was to prepare ourselves for future capital spending.
That's right.
It reflects the it reflects the budget that was approved the other day. But then in terms of the revenues, it's gonna slightly reduce the revenues coming in.
And you'll see and you'll see that next year when we have certified and obtained.
It does reflect, it does impact the budget. The rate increase, because I know that Jeff Lubian was talking about the warrant committee report and what changes that detail.
It'll impact what we have in retained earnings next year to use towards the budget and then any other things that we want to use.
Okay. All right, a motion to recommend favorable action on Article thirteen.
So moved.
Second, on favor. Thank you. So Article fourteen, we got a bunch of information.
Yeah, this is what I call the Weiss report because Jack Weiss has requested this every year.
What is this? I mean, it's like.
It's really just. Yeah, I I what I what I kind of just wanted to show is what what the revolving funds are, what the balances and expenditures have been.
Is this just years of what, you know, historical trends on the revolving funds?
It's a quarterly report.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Has there ever been? So the revolving fund basically sets a spending limit, I guess. Has there ever been an instance where a fund has not been adequate to support the underlying activity?
Great question.
Thing that I can recall, there might have been one in my five years here, but in that sticks out.
Is it the same funds?
I think they've been pretty adequate.
Okay.
And Jack was asking for just informational purposes or was he concerned about?
He just likes to know.
I mean, if you look at, you know, if I go back and I haven't a chance to really look at this, twenty six fiscal year twenty sixteen, it's the same funds. The limits were three hundred fifty one thousand dollars and today it's four oh four oh six. So it hasn't been much of a change. Right? I mean, it's quick math there. It's about fifty seven thousand. No, fifty five thousand. Yeah, so appreciate the information. So these limits that are in place, and I think I'm doing this article right.
Yeah, we need to nail that down tomorrow. And who's doing what article?
Yeah, sure. Talk about specifically what each of these revolving funds include. Okay.
So in the warrant itself, there's a description of each of them.
And that's fine and how revolving funds work.
I I did find one deficit. If you go to June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, Rockman Maintenance went over by three thousand three.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
I can't overspend.
And Rockman went over by not quite two hundred in the. I'm a thank you for Rockman Maintenance.
I think that was if it was twenty twenty one, my my inclination is that was when we were mowing the paths wider so people could walk there during COVID.
Okay, that's cool.
I I'm not questioning or complaining. Yeah, no, just.
Oh, there you go.
I remember that conversation.
Yeah, it's incredible, Elizabeth. Thank you for pointing that out. Yeah. You can't spend more than what's been appropriated, right?
That's right.
You have to go back to town meeting, Roy's point to increase the limit.
Either town meeting or the the benefit of it is that you can go to this, the work committee and the select board can jointly vote to increase them.
You made that point in town meeting. And, okay, we'll have to see what's debated on this will be.
Usually generally just.
Yeah, all right. Do I have a motion to recommend favorable action?
So moved.
On favor. All right, you want to walk us through your recommendation on the general staff fund?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
You sent out a spreadsheet.
Let me put two numbers in just so to give you a choice.
From the.
Yeah, let me.
From the screen, Jeff, anyone else on? I didn't turn my computer on.
Hold on. Nobody has. I agree.
Okay, I have my computer. I just didn't turn. And presumably Patrice is the plan to walk through exactly this calculation or the town meeting from town meeting four.
We should talk about the just to calculate the the approach in general, and then we can talk about what the approach with would be for town meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
I can I can tell the number.
Okay, I just joined if you want me to.
No, I got it. So this was in your packet.
Yep.
Okay, so the so the essentially what's what we're showing here today is that the free cash that was certified. Excuse me. So the free cash that was certified as of the end of fiscal year twenty two was fifteen million, five hundred fifty three thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars. We are using the amounts shown in the FY twenty four budget, both for operating and for OPEB. That leaves us a remaining balance of five million, three hundred eight thousand, eighty one dollars. There is a policy in the, one of the policies that was approved in September was was for how what the free cash rollover would be. And there is a target listed of three to five percent of.
Free cash guidelines, right?
Free cash guidelines and the the basis for the revenues. It says it's the revenues in the same year as the free cash was certified. So it would be for FY twenty three, it's it's a little bit convoluted the way that it's the way that it's worded. But it looks like it's meant it's targeted at the FY twenty three revenues. And the FY twenty three revenues were one, for the budget purposes, were one million, one hundred forty four million, nine hundred eighty four thousand. So just doing straight math on those FY twenty three revenues. If the target for carry forward is three to five percent, three percent target carry forward is the four mil, four point three million. Three point two five percent is four point seven million, three point five percent is just over five million. And then what's in the remaining column is just looking at the five point three million that remains at after we've done our FY twenty four budget building and transferring the balance. And that's just kind of a starting point for conversation for what the general stabilization transfer might be.
A couple of questions. So just an observation. So basically what we're deciding is how much we want to have left in free cash.
Yes.
Versus stabilization fund.
How much you want to roll over?
Reminding, the general stabilization fund, is that a two thirds vote as well?
Yes.
To take that out.
To transfer in, it's a majority vote.
Yeah, you can take out that I'm talking about taking out. And that differs from, so the general stabilization fund is available for anything. Capital is only for capital projects.
That's correct.
Yes, yes, and yes and no. I think town meeting would have
a tran- a transfer from the capital stabilization fund. So my my initial reaction is we ought to transfer more rather than less for the practical reason that that free cash number will have an influence in the debate that takes place over the override next year. And frankly, the less free cash we have, the easier the argument becomes.
I have this discussion every year, but when you have the FY twenty three revenue number of one hundred forty four point nine million, is that the total operating budget including money?
It is.
Yep.
Because we.
Septive number.
You know, it seems like every year we're bringing up the issue that when this these guidelines were developed, these large debt issuances were not on the table. And I've always thought that the guideline should be reframed outside of debt exclusions.
And support that, yeah.
So that number was, you know, more like if the debt exclusion number is on the ballpark of eleven or twelve million before becomes like a hundred and thirty or something. Then actually what you calculate as the remainder here would be much larger. So that would argue for transferring a larger amount just because the calculation now is excessively conservative. Plus, the reason we've already identified about reducing the amount of free cash for that reason.
I agree with that addition, Roy, same, right?
Let me just follow that logic. So what you're saying is debt exclusions, the revenue for debt exclusions are, we have the money, right? It's just it's outside the levies.
Well, it's included in that.
One of these guidelines.
I know it's included.
For unforeseeable events, the three percent was like an insurance value, but there's no risk associated with the debt exclusion number.
Well, the free cash guidelines, I was the proponent of this before you joined the board, was every year we would have this debate about how much free cash to use. Obviously, we're using close to ten million this year. And Division of Local Services would say that as a guideline, you should have three to five percent of free cash available for unintended, you know, for, you know, to spread.
Yeah, but I guess the question was always three to five percent of what.
No, fair point. So the point you're making is that debt exclusion revenues should be outside of this calculation because we do in fact have a dedicated receipt for that, for tax receipts.
Yes.
So if you were to lower that, then you're guiding, you're in fact exceeding your guideline. Meaning that if you were to, you're exceeding the floor.
Yeah, because I thought it was a three to five percent.
You're exceeding the floor. So right now we're looking at, you know, we're barely, we're barely over the three percent.
Whereas if we if we remove the debt exclusions, it makes us actually look a little better. I mean, and 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 not just means this look, we are actually better than this. This number shows, but I think we're still willing.
I mean, so the debate's gonna become that if we are in fact exceeding our free cash guidelines, why aren't we using more free cash?
I don't think we are exceeding our free cash guidelines. So it was three to five percent.
If you reduce that one forty four by the by the debt exclusion amount, then you say it's about.
Does someone have it here?
But I I'm just doing the math.
One hundred and thirty million.
But I don't think that doesn't bump us over five percent, though, does it?
Well, it's closer to five percent.
It gets closer.
But we're still in the range.
I'm not I'm not suggesting, Elizabeth, that we're gonna use more cash. I'm just saying that you're gonna, you're going to sort of push that percentage higher if you do that. And I agree with Roy's logic on this because we have a dedicated revenue stream from it from the debt exclusion. Therefore, we don't need to concern about.
So it does.
Turn us out, we'd have available free cash for operation purposes.
It does seem, though, that following both my logic on the override and Roy's logic on real numbers, that we are inclined to support the higher number.
Yeah, I I would support the higher number only because it's gonna help us plan once we start.
What do you mean higher number, hiring?
Are sorry, are we gonna transfer?
Oh, yeah.
Two hundred thirty, if we have a range from two thirty three to nine fifty eight, I I am coming in favor of the nine fifty eight. So.
Is that what we're suggesting? We transfer the capital staff fund, nine hundred thirty eight thousand?
Not capital general state.
General state, excuse me.
Yeah, that's my first question, is the difference between the two, just to go.
Jennifer, where does it come out when you?
So so first of all, I just say we probably should not be changing policy on the fly. So.
We're just, we're trying to understand the calculation. Some policy discussion. This is a board policy, first of all. Well, it's a financial policy. The Warren Committee's gonna have to weigh in as well.
So in fiscal year twenty three, the the debt service for exempt debt was thirteen million, seven hundred nineteen thousand. So that's a significant number.
One thirty one, yeah.
Yeah, so it gets us down to a total revenue of one hundred thirty one million. So three percent of that, if we were to do the math, the remaining number would be one point three seven million. That we would potentially transfer instead of the nine hundred fifty eight thousand.
So given that the the main rationale for free cash is an insurance fund, this indicates that transferring the higher amount should be okay.
Do you mind if I ask the chairman, Warren Committee's?
He's gonna be talking about it tonight.
Thank you, Jeff Lubin, Chair of the Warren Committee. I'm still in town meeting mode, excuse me. Really of the operating budget, not of the debt exclusion, and something I think we should all revisit between now and maybe the fall or and then take it up in the fall. I think it's it's a valid argument. I do agree with Jennifer, though. I don't think you want to pivot on policy. You know, without having that conversation, even though if it's it's gonna be pretty straightforward. I I do worry that if you do pivot today on this and add more people who are proponents of utilizing free cash as much as possible might point to this. I I think I think the prudent thing is to stick with the current policy. Put away the nine, the nine fifty eight, which, you know, is just hovering around where we need to be.
Yeah, I don't think anybody was talking about changing numbers on the fly. I think I'm just trying to.
Your point of view, Jeff, on this, and likely the Warren Committee's leaning in point of view tonight would be to support higher. Elizabeth has just, you know, recommended, you know, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so what would what would the number be?
The number would be the nine fifty eight, five five eight.
We just round it up or down or make it a new number?
You can make it nine fifty.
Nine fifty.
Is that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll move that we recommend favorable action on Article fifteen using nine hundred fifty thousand dollars as the transfer amount.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, that was a good debate. Appreciate that, Elizabeth. Thank you. And thank you, Jennifer. All right, so we did sixteen. Seventeen is just run by us again what this is.
Yeah, we do. I'll go over it. Seventeen, this is the Uber and Lyft money that we receive and that has to be appropriated every year. We've been getting it, I think, the last four years.
Does that mean Uber and Lyft money? I'm sorry.
It, yeah, yeah, good. So there, the the, they started to regulate the Uber and Lyft companies and there's a, they assess a forty cent per ride charge and twenty cents of it stays with the state, twenty cents of it goes to the community in which the ride originated. And so that's the ten thousand dollars is our share of the forty cents.
So use use your ride share.
That's somehow, I mean, low, I mean.
No, this is about what we receive last few years.
We got sixteen or seventeen thousand, so it's.
And that was definitely went down during COVID. Yeah, then COVID, it it did a nose dive.
What are we appropriating it for?
So we are appropriating it for, I think I wrote in the warrants.
Infrastructure fund.
Transportation. We have generally given, so just FYI, we've we've done specific projects in the past, Council on Aging. I had asked to use this money specifically. Right now, they, we have passed appropriated money from from this article that the Council on Aging is still kind of sitting on and waiting for. So what I had put into the warrant article is the funds will provide additional support for transportation related projects. So we can kind of fund projects as it comes up. There's nothing specific.
That that would be a future appropriation of town meeting.
No, no, this is the.
So do we have a specific fund for transportation related projects then? That's that's my question.
Yes.
A tag on this money.
So we have motions with tags on it. So for example, we've had previous motions to, I believe, put some money towards designing of intersections for specific programs within the Council on Aging, things like that.
So my question is, do we need to create a transportation fund, which we're not doing right now, but. So so just the way that this is a, these these kind of grants are a little bit awkward. And I think we'll get to that when we get to the opioid funding as well, you know, so with, there's a specific purpose that's tied to it. So we'll have to spend it within the the confines of the of the grant. However, it's not a grant in your traditional sense, so any. However, it's not a grant in your traditional sense. So any revenue that comes to this, to the town is general fund revenue unless it's otherwise designated. So this is our means of going through town meeting for them to designate and appropriate the funding. As a standalone appropriation, it's alive, it's a little bit like a capital appropriation in that it does not revert to the general fund at the end of June, like other, you know, operating budgets. So it, it remains viable for, for future projects. So this.
We don't, we don't need a fund. We have internal processes that tag this money. The reason I'm saying is that I actually would be in favor of, I, I like, you know, it's good to align use with, or usage with, with future spending, meaning this is where in Tarim the roads, so it makes sense to to have it now applied.
Again, we're taking, we're starting to get questions about what, what's the town transportation infrastructure? So we haven't yet identified. So town meeting's appropriating under Article seventeen, ten grand to small, of course. It'll be debated to the town's transportation infrastructure. The question's going to become, what does that mean?
Transportation-related projects.
So.
So it, it could be the design of.
I understand that. We're going to have sort of points of view on, in terms of where we're used. So they, they're giving us the authority, I mean, they're appropriating, giving us the authority to use this money for transportation, transportation-related infrastructure.
Projects, not infrastructure. Transportation.
Projects.
Projects.
And so we don't need a specific appropriation to that. We can just use this money.
So that's where I'm confused. So town meeting is appropriating the money?
Yep.
And then which body specifically authorizes the expenditure for a particular project?
So that would be?
Town meeting.
Town meeting, yeah.
So they've already appropriated ten.
So once they appropriate it, then it just works through the internal mechanisms of the town to spend that money. So if the Council on Aging, the Council on Aging right now has ten thousand, ten thousand dollars or so of this money to use. They would come to Jennifer or myself to, to find out how they could utilize that money. Hey, I have a project. This is what I want to use it for. We would see if it, it's, it's eligible for that use and then they can spend the money.
So the, the actual expenditure for some specific purpose would be town administrator decision or, okay, just to be.
Yeah, finance team.
How it's happening, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think the, the, because it's small amounts of money that can be used in multiple areas, as long as it's eligible, I, we just don't have an identification of what that is yet.
I, I, we appreciate that, understand that. I think you need to just, you're going to have to describe.
Uh, you know.
Question's going to be, well, what, so we, we're going to identify a number of, at our discretion. I mean, so Tom, we're giving, Tom, he's giving us the authority as administration to identify transportation-related projects to spend this funding for. I know it's ten grand, but, you know.
I mean, I can say, I can probably, with this amount, it's most likely going to go to the designing of something in town.
Yeah, well, I think we just need to prepare that because they're, they're appropriating money for specific reason and, and that, and that's the authority, given us authority to do that, and we have to spend it on for that reason, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So a motion to recommend favorable action on Article seventeen.
So moved.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
All right, Article eighteen, you have to explain this to everybody once before. Do you want to, do you mind just?
Not at all, not at all. And this one, I, I have to admit that I have not been able to devote as much attention to this as I, as I would have liked. I think my focus has been on, on other fiscal concerns in town. But the, the, the town has been the recipient, along with every other community, you know, in the state of the Johnson and Johnson and Jansen and the distributors, you know, CBS, Walgreens, Walmart, you know, all of those settled with the Attorney General as well as other state attorney generals across the country for the, the opioid. There was a lawsuit around, around the, around that. So over the course of sixteen or eighteen years, we are going to be receiving a sizable amount of money. However, as with the TNC funding, that's not a grant, so we don't, we have, we have a mechanism to take green grants and spend the grants. But it's a, it's more of a general fund revenue stream. So without a specific appropriation for it, it would go into the general fund and then it would just fall to free cash. The problem is there are some very specific rules around how this, this funding can be spent. And we are in violation of the agreement if we aren't spending it on those things. That being said, we don't, some of those things are not what we typically would spend it on. So we need to kind of get groups together to figure out how we're going to do the spending. You know, what's the best approach for Belmont? And we just have not had a chance to put those groups together and really come up with a meaningful, a meaningful plan. It's primarily, while over the course of the sixteen, eighteen years, it's a, it's a nice amount of money. In the individual year basis, it's not necessarily going to be that sizable that it makes a, makes a big difference. I mean, it'll make a big difference to the lives of the people that it ends up touching in the end. So what, what the state has done is, you know, I've, I've actually set through a number of different conversations about this at statewide conferences of our peers. And the, the best advice as of now is for us to create a, an opioid settlement stabilization fund. Dedicate the funding so that is to be received, you know, it's now and in the future to that fund. And then it will be subject to later appropriation by the, by town meeting from that fund. It will require a two-thirds vote, unfortunately, at that point. But it, but, you know, that way then we make sure that we're not going to be running afoul of, of the settlement terms.
Okay.
So what we're doing in Article eighteen is establishing that fund and dedicating the, the revenues. We have already received in fiscal year twenty-three, there was a bit of a, kind of it grouped together a number of years of payments, so it's a little bit higher than what we'll be receiving in future years, but it's a hundred and seven thousand. So that is now an amount that will be in the stabilization fund and will have a future year appropriation to be able to access that funding.
Is this something, thank you very much for that explanation. Would we be in a position by the fall to determine appropriation?
Potentially, Mark. I, you know, I don't want to.
Meeting next year. So we got a hundred and seven thousand. It's for dead, specific purposes, correct? Here.
Hundred and seven thousand. That seems, how much money? Did you just say hundred and seven thousand?
Yes.
How much we've got in there right now?
Hundred and seven thousand.
Okay, that's more than I realized.
Nineteen.
I, I think, oh, there we go. You know, once, I think once we have our finance team up and running and.
That's fine. I'm not, I'm not, not suggesting we should be in a position. I'm just trying to, I'm, I understand for a while that we're trying to establish the fund. We're trying to seed it and then for future purposes, we'll make determinations in terms of where to use the money. Is this a one-time event or are we going to continue to get settlement amounts?
What I, what I would envision is that if we can come up with a, an approach, a strategy that's going to work, you know, particularly well, that then it would be something that we would, we would figure out what that ongoing programming is. And maybe this is a source of funding from the operating budget for this particular.
Money to be used for substance abuse treatment issues, things of that nature for within the schools or within the town or?
It's, it's for all ages. It is for, particularly for substance abuse.
I think it's great that we have, I mean, I started, you know, securing a lot of money, but it is a decent amount to be used for certain reasons.
Yeah. So for that reason, I hate to, to rush it and try.
No, I'm not suggesting that we should be, I'm not suggesting we're in a position to do that. It's nice to get this kind of money to be able to use for true reason.
It is.
Okay, cool. All right. Thank you. By the way, the motion to recommend favorable action on Article eighteen?
So moved.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
So what, so the Article eighteen will go first, right? Clearly, it's a meeting. Then once that's done, then nineteen will follow. That's the order. To then transfer this money to that fund. So I have a motion to recommend favorable action on Article nineteen.
So moved.
Okay, Rick. All right, great. Twenty is capital. We did have a report from Chris Doyle on Monday evening. Are we comfortable enough at this point to vote on this? Or do you want to spend a little bit more time saving?
Uh, I'm, I'm comfortable voting on it.
Thought it was good.
My one comment, again, keep raising things that we're not going to deal with now. Um, been some discussion, looking at street tree, the street tree planting. And I know that we're underfunding trees and their idea is that if we could find someone to own a fund, that citizens would very gladly donate to more tree planting.
So we do have the, the, the tree planting program, but it's the black outside. It's just, it goes to the general pool and the tree will be planted. But we definitely, definitely need some understanding of how we move forward with tree planting. Because based on what Jay tells me, a significant amount of trees are going to have to be removed because of vivid infestation.
Well, I, I have a operational issue separate from the actual capital expenditure with that, especially last year, which was very dry. A good number of trees that were planted actually died and.
What you did.
Yeah, it's a tree in the ground that needs a lot of care the first two years.
Yeah, established.
And that, that should be.
Someone was mentioning.
Guys have staffing to really do.
Yeah, someone was mentioning to me the other day about if neighbors see a tree, you know, in front of their property.
I made such a.
Was that you? Okay, that was you.
What was this? Were, are you walking around checking on trees?
Yes.
He's watering trees.
County, county frogs, county trees, county cars. We need to, I think one, I think we have to increase the device here salary.
Our, our, on the ground data collector.
Tree bags now, but they're frequently empty.
That's right.
And to fill them actually requires a truck because you can't carry that much water by hand.
Yeah. Well, is there? Okay. Is there a way that we, I had a tree print on the front of our house. We had one removed and planted. And Tom Walsh at the time, you know, Tom, we all know Tom, but bless him. He knew me and said, hey, Mark, you know, perhaps you may want to just water them. My wife Christine was very diligent. You know, I, I tried it and she, she was more diligent than I was and watered it.
Well, as, as usual, I have, I've raised a, an issue that's, that's going to require more discussion. I just think there might be ways to do, I, I just think we need a strategy. And I think there are a lot of citizens who would gladly contribute time and/or money. We need someone to own it. We, we need to find a home for the tree program.
We're going to get a watering can. Well, you know, but it's a fair point because if, if, if homeowners find it within their time, perhaps they can to water the tree, that'd be great.
Well, and the, the all-in cost of planting a tree is a couple of hundred dollars. And to lose it because it doesn't get enough orders, really, is a shame.
So just, yeah, just personal experience, we had tree, uh, my neighbor and I did, had trees put in and they put the bags around it and they DPW reached out to us and said, you know, it's up to us to fill them to make super success for the trees and we have. So I think it's education for homeowners or people close to the new trees, if, if possible, to take responsibility and, like you clear your hydrant, is fill the water bags for the first couple of years.
Yeah. I think that in sidewalks, I mean, there are a number of sidewalks in our community. When I walk my dog, that you need a ladder. Okay. Well, I mean, it's concerning, right? I mean, you don't know who lives there and got, you know, seniors or just people, whatever, that aren't seniors. It's dangerous. And, uh, you know, might be helpful in the future, perhaps over the summer months or whenever. Do you have a report out from Glenn on our pavement manager program? We had a concerned citizen on Monday night that was screaming at us about that. And our sidewalk plant, is that more Jay than?
Jay sidewalks.
Yeah, does that make sense, kind of, the team, to understand what our, I mean, I, I think we're diligent. I think we're, we're dedicating ourselves to paving our roads and repairing our sidewalks. And this is endless, as you indicated on Monday night, right?
So I think we've got two things. I mean, first of all, we do have money in here for the assessment update at the sidewalks. And secondly, I think going forward, we've got to find more money for sidewalks.
And we, we get a some more formal report out on that, what the plan is for the community to understand that.
Well, I, I think, but comprehensive, the comprehensive capital budget to me, I think, is.
We can do that as well.
I, I, that's why they want the money for this.
Yeah, right.
There's a separate issue, you know, maybe how close are we to hiring our new tree warden?
I might have some more information on that in, in the summer.
There's a lot of, a lot of the sidewalks are caused by trees.
That's our question.
And it's called to repair a sidewalk about having a plant for the tree that's there. When the tree, if a tree is removed, it's a different story.
Tree needs to be taken down because I don't know how you know how to do that.
I mean, I think it might be worth having Jay come in, obviously after town meeting, to have a conversation with the board about trees and sidewalks and, and how to.
You can do that in the month of June, if you want. I, Roy's chair, you can decide, you know, what's an appropriate topic. I think it is.
I'm happy to talk about.
Jay can talk about trees. We can be here for a night.
No, no, it's work. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Well, anytime, but so I, but we digress.
As I said, I, I bear responsibility for, for raising this.
Do we have, is this, does this include Article twenty, Chapter ninety funds?
Yeah, we don't have to appropriate, we, we, there used to be an article that.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask about that. We don't have to do that anymore. So if we recommend favorable action, do we have to do every motion here?
I think, can't we just recommend favorable, favorable action on the entire article?
Well, I mean, yeah, we can just say, recommend favorable action on, on all of the motions contained within Article twenty.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
So I think the moderator will, I think his motion will be, I, I'm not sure what Mike will do, but that, that's our votes. Okay, Article twenty-one, I haven't really seen this calculation. Presumably this is correct, right?
Well, I had a question about that because the, the specific calculation is laid out in the financial policies document. I wanted to ask whether this amount was calculated in accordance with that formula.
I took the, the numbers that are listed for town light sewer and water from a calculation that, that Floyd distributed in in early January. So I, I haven't gone through it to kind of confirm his math. So I just simply took the numbers from his, his memo that was to, to Patrice and I, along with a, a number of others.
Well, but originally with Floyd, it should be consistent because he and I labored over the formula of a financial policies document for quite a while. But I guess.
I mean, it's a shame the amount of time you're spending.
Well, it's one of those things, as long as since we have a policy, I just wanted to make sure we're following, so.
Okay. Any questions? We have a motion recommend favorable action in Article twenty-one.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the final article is twenty-two. The one thing I didn't see, Patrice, is shouldn't it be an article? The transfer of funds?
That's the second part of it.
That's the second motion.
So it's the, the first, the first section is.
Oh, so these are both, so, okay, I see. Okay, I'm sorry. So this.
The spending and the revenues, yeah.
So the general question is, the, these amounts, I'm sure the answer is yes, include our final discussion that we voted on the budget. We could go Monday, whatever it was. Before town meeting.
That's right.
So it's a six hundred grand going to additional appropriation to the schools.
Correct, that's right.
They'll need to make a decision on subsequent to town meeting.
That's right.
On seeding their stabilization fund, correct?
Yes, that's a separate vote after.
These amounts include everything that we, this, this, clearly, these motions today reflect that final budget vote.
That's right.
Okay. Any questions?
No, this is what we talked about all through the winter and spring, so.
And I just wanted to highlight, you know, again, I, I think it bears repeating that this does reflect the new shared services model. So that it, it combines the employee and retiree benefit lines from both the towns and the schools and breaks the public facilities out as its own separate line, where previously it had been embedded within public services and it adds the school custodians to the public facilities. So those are just those moving pieces. So this is that final culmination. If people are looking to do a comparison from F, the, the town meeting motions last year to the town meeting motions this year, they're, they're not going to be an apples to apples because of some of those moving pieces. So I just wanted, I wanted to make sure that we're all kind of aware of that. We've been talking about this for a number of months. So I think for us, it just seems like old hat, but for others that, that may not have been following, that will be new.
So we may want to be prepared to show the motion from last year because people will want to see what's changed. Okay, so I, I just think as a matter of presentation, have that ready because someone will ask.
Kind of to show a crosswalk of what was removed, what was changed. Yeah, absolutely.
So Jennifer, the, the light department pilot payment will revert to six hundred and fifty next year. This is still catch up from.
Yep. Yes, and that's included in the multi-year fiscal forecast as well, the six fifty.
Do we need to revisit that as the light board?
You know, we've, I've talked to Craig about this in the past and I, there's a lot of moving pieces to it. I think it may be worth a discussion, but I do think it's, it's something that there's give and take on both sides. And I think that both sides realize the, what the town does for light, what the light does for town. And there's a lot of in-kind services that doesn't get captured in that six fifty that really has a lot of sensitivity.
It's been six fifty since I've been on the board.
Yeah.
It's been six for a very long time, but
and it's really not consistent. I mean, the six fifty, because it. And it's really not consistent, I mean, the six fifty, because it was the greater of, I forget what it was, six percent of the, that income or six fifty, something like that, if I recall, what the actual policy is.
Uh, I forget if this was discussed during the light department audit or during a light, uh, light board meeting, but, municipal munis, mu- muni electric departments in Massachusetts are all over the map in terms of pilot payments. And, you know, maybe reflecting some rough balance of in-kind trades and so forth. But whatever the reasons are, Belmont is more or less in the middle of the pack. Uh, so even though it hasn't changed in quite a long time, it's still in the middle of the pack.
It is, and I, I will say that the relationship that the town has with the light department in terms of in-kind services, um, both, both ways is really good. So I, I don't know if a discussion of, of that kind would create some instability with.
And I should say that after making the pilot payment for the most recent year, it reduces Belmont Lights net for the year to, virtually zero, so.
Really?
That's interesting.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to ask, um, too, in relation to some rumblings in the community, if there is an amendment put forward to use free cash, where the board's position is going to be?
To use free cash for any amendment that comes forth.
Uh, do we know of anything besides school committee? Or I'm sorry.
All I know is, um, I've heard of a school committee, a school department, school.
I mean, I've heard of, I've heard rumblings about two different ones, one that would just be a straight transfer, transfer of cash, one that is to, um, seed, uh, some in district, uh, spend.
A topic came up last night at the school committee.
Yeah, um.
I agree with your point of view in that. I think it's a fair one.
Well, but my point of view didn't necessarily include, my point of view was, was looking at, um, next year's override to target funds. I, I, I am not coming out with a clear position right now, but I will say is I could see it going either way. On the one hand, if, if we want to do that and standard some, the outflow of out of district replacements, which has been egregious this year. Maybe it does make sense to spend some free cash now. The flip side is I hate to undermine the discipline of the budget process.
Well, the superintendent's point of view is they don't need outside help. But I'm, I'm not an expert in this hearing. I have a lot more knowledge. So, I mean, I, I think that some of the points that were raised by one school committee member were fair. I mean, do we need outside support? I mean, you, you said M A P C is providing some, perhaps some.
I don't think they provide.
No, no, on, um, to, just to use that as a, it's sort of a analogy. I mean, on planning, um, I, I don't know the answer to that. So I don't know the, I don't know my answer to what, what is the amount, not inclined to use, we're using close to ten million dollars.
Yes.
And we're pretty tight on our free cash guideline, correct?
Okay.
What's the amount of money for outside? And now the superintendent has a point of view, at least, I think it was clear to me that when John was speaking last night, he believes that their current staffing that they have, if the gentleman's name that oversees special education in Belmont feels as though that we don't need outside help to, to.
Yeah, I, I also, from my perspective, I'm, I take it more from a pragmatic point of view. You have a new number one coming in in July one, you have a new number two potentially coming in after that.
Decide what their needs are.
Well, that and to give them this and, and also, hey, by the way, we're preparing for an override in, in the spring. I, I don't, I don't know how that person would be able to do that lift. It, it's such a lift.
So I'm, I'm gonna, uh, be a little blunt here and say, um, from my perspective, to have the, uh, out of district to outflow that we have this year, clearly it was not being managed well. I mean, those numbers speak for themselves, but I do think that there is, um, so I, I, I don't think the school department can claim that it has or is able to handle it. But the flip side is I think Patrice, uh, there, there has to be a discipline of the process.
Oh, I agree, and I, I don't.
Respect.
I don't know what, yeah. I don't know what a new superintendent though would, how they would view that. And I think we need to give them time to absorb the district, understand the district, to say, okay, you have to now change the district as soon as you permit. I, I think that that's setting them up.
I mean, but this gives them additional funds to whatever the amount might be that they, they could have in their car to use outside consults necessary. Doesn't mandate it, does it mandate it?
Well, you can't mandate anything that you put in the school budget.
Yeah.
Free cash. So I've seen, I've seen information in this. We've got, I think all three of us have gotten an email on this. I think it's three hundred grand I see as a number that's out there. I, I don't think I would be in favor of using more free cash. But I understand the point of view, Elizabeth, thank you for that, that sort of background. There seems to be a real need here to look at this issue.
Right, I think that seems clear, but the email I got says that a, a number of town meeting together, town meeting members got together and decided this is what they should do. It didn't come from the school committee as far. So it didn't come from the school administration. It's a, it's a number, the justification for which is unclear. It's like two or three full-time people for a year to study this problem, that seems like.
Yeah.
And I, I do go back to a few years ago when there was a, um, a motion on, for, from, from town meeting members to restore some budget for chary middle school staff. And the superintendent, to his credit, was very candid and said, I can't guarantee we'd use it for the procedure. And, and it's true, we have an independently elected school committee. I think we need to defer to their judgment on this.
And if this, if this is a, a kind of a setup fee, there is money kind of on the periphery that the school might be able to obtain. There's additional ARPA money that they haven't expended in twenty-three. There's, you know, potentially state appropriations that could come through. You know, one we were talking about with Dave Arge specifically. So there, there's that lever out there as well. So to give them an additional three hundred thousand potentially in free cash of an already strained free cash, I think is short sighted.
I think I'd be unfavorable. Uh, can I ask, uh, Stellibian, what his thoughts are on this?
Uh, I, I concur. I, I think this undermines, you know, we've had a budget process starting in October or even earlier. I think, I think the spirit is there. I've been told, I've had some conversations to get some education behind this. This is a multi-year approach that's going to take investment upfront and then pay off downstream. I don't think we're in the right position for fiscal twenty-five with Patrice mentioning the new superintendent. But mostly from the warrant committee perspective, we are maxing out on free cash. Our free cash replenishment rates are coming down. We're going to be in, in the financial battle of our lives next year. I, I think any in, in incremental funds should, should just be left alone at this point and we'll take it up tonight. I think the majority of the warrant committee will share my sentiment on that.
And, and I will say, and this is a position I've been clear on all along. We have to have a unified budget face if we want a successful override next year. Um, if, if, if there's a civil war on the floor of town meeting, I think we tank our override. So that's just a word of, of caution and that does go back to my original point where, um, was this mishandled? Yeah, I think it was. Um, but we do have a process that we, um, that we do need to follow and we've got to be unified. Um, or else, or else we're in dire, dire straits next year.
I think that's, uh, sums it up.
Okay.
Agreed. So this, the spirit's there, as Jeff indicated, it seems to be clearly a need, Elizabeth, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's not the vehicle to do that and we'll leave it up to Dr. Kaiser.
Well, and, and not just that, this, as, as we have repeatedly stated, this is under the purview of the school committee. The select board does not control.
There's only one member that seems to be somewhat leaning in that direction last night. The other members were, I think there's concern that this has to be closely. And let the school committee decide how to do that, right?
Well, and, and I will say, Meg Moria, and I spoke a couple of months ago, and Meg has done a, a deep dive on some of, some of the issues there. So I, I do appreciate the analytical work that she has done as chair.
Another background issue here, um, and thank you, Patrice and Jennifer for working on the MOU. I think you did a great job on that. It seemed to be, I, there wasn't voted for last night. There was one additional change that was suggested, but it seems as though the school committee is moving, like directionally in favor of it, both the facilities MOU and the, and health benefits MOUs. So I think that's, that's, that was a good sign last thing.
So I guess the question for the, for the, for that piece of it is, once the schools vote on it, obviously you'll have to take a look. And, um, I can send that to you now, the draft, if you.
So they're going to vote on it, um, at their next school committee meeting, which I have no idea when it is.
June fifth, June sixth, I'm sorry, June sixth.
But, so let me ask you this question then. We would have voted the budget by then, right? Does these budget numbers include, assume that the MOUs are in place?
Yep.
If they don't vote in favor of it, what happens? That, that these are, that's still in place?
Voted at town meeting. I mean, I, 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 I got general support for, for.
I think there were, there were some comments and some suggested changes, I think, that we could live with, right? And I agree that they were fine. Um, but unless they vote, I mean, at the end of the day, it's, you know, we're moving forward here no matter what. So if the MOU is not approved by the school committee, and it's not approved by the school committee.
That's right.
Although it's not in the spirit of working collaboratively, as I said last night, that I think that's important. Wonder if they can take out their vote before budget.
I mean, again, I think we got general consensus.
Yeah, I think we did.
They just wanted that, they just wanted to see a clean copy.
It was a very favorable meeting. I, you know, really appreciate the school committee, um, support on this. Soon as I was moving in that direction with the changes.
Yeah, I think they just wanted to vote on a clean copy with that additional language.
Yeah, okay, cool. All right. All right, I think we're done then.
You have to take a position.
Do I have a motion? Um, what's that?
I just, you, you started.
Our motion for favorable action in Article twenty-two. All the motions.
All of the motions, yes, second.
All in favor? I think that's it, right?
Yeah, that's it, that's it.
Okay, that's great. Ninety twenty, um, so our next, um, is next Wednesday at, right?
Yeah, prior to town meeting.
Prior to town meeting at five thirty. And we will be meeting, um, May thirty-first, uh, June fifth at five thirty, and then Wednesday, June seventh. Our next regular meeting is the end of June, June twenty-fifth at seven P M. Um, and just to give a shout out to Public Forum for the Bowman Rankin Sports Facility. That will be Thursday, June first, so next Thursday, June first, two thousand and twenty-three.
So great work. Sorry, what, what did you say was the meeting in June?
June twenty-fifth, Monday.
That's a Sunday, twenty-sixth is a Monday.
I'm around on Sunday if you want to meet.
Oh, sure.
So, Teresa and Jennifer, great work on, and, and this team and, all our town administration staff, the great work that they've done to really, um, pull together.
I have to say, you're one of this new budget process. You did so much work, Jennifer. We're really, really appreciative. And it's setting up, setting us up well to continue the process in years going forward.
Okay, yeah.
So.
I, I'm hearing lots and lots and lots of good things about you around the town, all well deserved. So just, just so you know that we, we see and appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Anniversary yesterday.
Yeah, oh my goodness.
Yeah.
It feels like longer given how much you've done.
What's that?
For one, one year anniversary yesterday.
We hope that.
Congratulations, happy anniversary. We should have a little cake this morning. Thanks for all your great work, uh, to both of you and really rounding out a team.
Yeah, it's going good.
Treasure on board and moving forward, so.
I'll be bringing that to you on the fifth.
Okay.
On the fifth, okay, great.
Uh, I was, I was impressed with that.
I look forward to, uh, we'll see everyone on, hopefully on Memorial Day, uh, we'll be, um, marching in that really truncated parade.
Hopefully it doesn't rain.
Looking forward to, uh, I share a speech on that morning. Roy, he, he wrote a speech, wasn't able to give it last year.
Three years ago.
Three years ago. I'm fine, I've done two speeches. Uh, I will look forward to listening, hearing what Roy has to say.
Good.
Come on, so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.